Hi Shannon.
Gone, man. Oh, they gone.
It's 6:00 PM and time to begin our special call meeting. Welcome to everyone. This is a rather unusual council meeting. And I'll briefly tell you what's going to transpire. In a moment, we will have a motion to go into executive session, which means me and the council, this city attorney, and the city recorder will go downstairs and meet in executive session. No one else is allowed to attend that meeting. I cannot tell you how long that meeting will last. When we come back, we will have citizens' input, in which everyone will have their opportunity to express or say what they want to to the council. And then we will go on with the rest of the business. So having said that, I need a motion for us to recess to executive session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that one.
Councilwoman Thomas makes a motion. Councilman Robertson seconds that motion. Is there discussion?
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Thank you. Excuse us.
I knew it was gonna take more than five minutes.
Don't wait on time.
Mr. Burns is be up in a minute. I just missed that by an hour. The five minutes. Thank you for your patience. For the minutes.
Probably she went to bathroom, I probably like a pee in a minute. I probably she went to bathroom.
Cause it is, man, it shouldn't. She got these tussie rolls right there, didn't she?
Anybody here? All my phones on. Correct? Okay Gina.
1A, close executive session concerning city manager Roy A. Haslip.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Councilman Robertson makes motion. Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
1B, approve the minutes of the executive session on August the 22nd, 2025. And I will read them. The city, the Lewisburg City Council held an executive session on Friday, August the 22nd, 2025, starting at 6:04 PM in a large conference room at the city of Lewisburg City Hall, 131 East Church Street, Lewisburg, Tennessee. Those present attending were Mayor Jim Bingham, Councilman Robertson, Councilman Shannon Crutcher, Councilman Vicki Michael, Councilman Tommy G. Burns, Councilman Linda Thomas, City Recorder Georgina Jones, City Attorney Thomas Hutto. City Attorney Thomas Hutto started the discussion of executive session at 6:04 PM. Subject matter of executive session was personnel matter relating to city manager Roy A. Haslip. City Manager Thomas Hutto ended the discussion of executive session at 7:05 PM.
Do I have motion to approve?
Could you read that last line again? Sorry.
City Attorney Thomas Hutto ended the discussion.
You said city manager when you were reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. City Attorney Thomas Hutto.
Do I have a motion?
So move, okay.
Go ahead Vicki.
I'll move.
Councilwoman accepted. Vicki Michael.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Linda Thomas, second set motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
I will now read a resolution on public comment and citizens' input. Whereas, a mayor and council wishes to allow the citizens of the city of Lewisburg to voice their opinions, concerns, or comments, and et cetera. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the city of Lewisburg, that, number one, citizens will be allowed to address the council during citizens' input. Number two, citizens addressing the council must abide by the following guidelines. Name and address be given for the record. Give subject matter description. Understand, there will be no voting. Three minutes maximum to speak. Address the council, not the audience. No personal attacks, no religious comments, and no more than three times on the same subject. Once the meeting is adjourned at the end, we ask that everybody exit the meeting room and the property in a timely manner. Thank you.
Before we ask you to come forward, we, I know this is an emotional issue, but I ask you to abide by what was just stated by Gina. So if you have a comment to make to the council, please come to the podium, give your name and your address.
And we have a sign-up sheet on the podium. Please make sure you fill it out if you are speaking.
Anyone?
Jerry Henry, address 1578 Wade Brown Road, Lewisburg. Was that all that you needed? Okay. Unfortunately, here we are again. It seems for another round of dismissing Mr. Roy Bam Haslip. A quote from the Bible, John 8th, Chapter 7th verse. And you may want to strike this, I'm not sure. I think you said something about not having any religious whatever, but let him who is without sin among you cast the first stone. It seems that from the beginning of Mr. Haslip's position of city manager, he has had boulders, not stones, thrown at him. I have never seen such an effort by some that has wanted to see him fail. It seems that instead of focusing on the needs of the people in the city of Lewisburg and the employees, there are those on the city council, his constituents, that are more focused on trying to get Mr. Haslip and I got you moments. My opinion is that this is not by accident and that it is, that it also looks and feels that there's a hint of racism involved here. I've lived long enough that I've seen this movie before. When my father Willie J. Mitchell was a councilman for 12 years, he and the other honorable councilmen were solely focused on working for the needs of the city of Lewisburg, the people, and the workers. They did not have the selfishness of being driven by power and putting their attention on trying to get rid of anyone. Their attention was on making sure employees were being treated fairly and that they benefited for their hard works. Well, when you thought that things were running fairly and smoothly, without calling names, after my father's defeat and the loss of two or three other councilmen, you had a few of those new councilmen that were power-driven. And as much as I hate to mention racism again, but as soon as they were sworn in, three or four of our African-American city employees that were in top positions were let go. Of course, there are going to be those that would say it was justifiable. But why is it that no one, it seems, but people of color are being scrutinized and closely monitored? My father tells of an old fable about a nosy and gossipy neighbor that spread the tale about seeing a neighbor of hers that had dirty laundry hanging on her clothesline and how awful it was that each day she had to look at it out the window, at the filthy clothes she was hanging out. But it wasn't until one day, the nosy neighbor had a visitor at her home and she was pointing out the window for her friend to see the dirty laundry. The friend just happened to rub her window and lo and behold, it wasn't that the neighbor's clothes were dirty, the nosy and gossipy woman's windows were dirty. So the moral of that story is check and see if your windows are dirty before you pass judgment on others.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Anyone else? Anyone? Sir?
My name is Wilford Wensel. I reside at 1216 Long Distance Road. I have nothing, absolutely nothing personally against the city manager. All I'd like to know, there's lots of concerned people here tonight, what about the victim? Is it nobody concerned? It's been a crime that's been perpetrated. There's been a charge that's been made. Been no conviction, but there's a person out there that had her rights violated. And I don't know if it was your sister, if it was your mother, if it was your aunt, if that happened to them, how you would feel. I really don't know. I don't know, but I think I do. And then two, in a real world environment, as a former commissioner, from six to 10, I tried to do everything I could to keep a good face for the public. When I went out, I mean, I did everything I could to hold myself above board. I mean, and I'm not saying he didn't, but mistake after mistake after mistake. And I've made my fair share of them, no doubt. Probably gonna make some more before the night's over. I hope not to. But by the same token, at some point in time, it's gotta stop. It's gotta stop. Attention needs to be brought to. TCA says plainly, an ethics violation is a code of conduct. Okay? I think it's a code of conduct violation been had here. I don't know for sure. I'd have to look and see. Y'all have the right to determine it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Tell me if somebody else coming along, can't we? Anybody else?
Hello. My name is Jessica Limbird. I live at 802 Franklin Avenue here in Lewisburg. I was very surprised by the news and then also kind of unsurprised by the news this past Wednesday, and I'll explain that statement. I was at the meeting last September with 200-plus other community members expressing our discontent at the... Hi Bam. At the, what had transpired. And luckily, we were able to rally behind our city manager and get his job reinstated. And so, I'm a woman. I'm someone who will always believe women. And no conviction has been made. I think right now, offering public comment, I have more questions than answers. I don't know what our city charter or the bylaws that govern employees, personnel policies that govern employees state. But if, I just don't think that the city council should rush to judgment, because I definitely have not rushed to judgment. And I do agree with the woman who was speaking earlier about there potentially being some bias involved in this. That being said, it's obviously a really delicate matter. So in this moment, as a citizen of Lewisburg, I ask that, I don't have the same stories as the gentleman before me. I have stories of a very responsive police department who sometimes sits on my road and people speed down my road, but Lewisburg Police Department is there to get them. And then sometimes, when there's, you know, racial slurs tagged on public buildings, Public Works is out there within 30 minutes to clean that off. When we are at a public event at Rock Creek Park, you know, we've got our city manager helping us to get electricity. So like Bam shows up for us. So I just implore the city council to show up for our city manager in this moment. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Shannon McLean. I live at 2062 Old Columbia Road, Lewisburg, Tennessee. I like the lady before me who's just spoke. I've seen our city manager in a lot of places and a lot of activities around our community. It is unfortunate that we are here tonight. And it isn't unfortunate that someone is being convicted before there's a trial. There are accusations, there's been an arrest, and then Mr. Haslip has his time in due process in court. Mr. Haslip is just like anybody else. I've known him all my life. We all have made mistakes. Whether he's made one or not, I'm not judging him or saying that he has. We don't know the outcome of what these things are and we don't know the motivation behind them at this particular junction. And so, as we go through the process, as you guys go through the process, as elected officials of the city of Lewisburg, we need to think about what our city looks like to the outside right now. A year ago, we were at the same point dealing with Mr. Haslip. The gentleman before said, it's over and over and it's over and it's over. I can speak to being in a leadership position and someone always making accusations against you. That doesn't make them true. That just makes them not like you. So as we move forward, the reason why you have people, concerned citizens of Lewisburg, I have seen Lewisburg continue to grow. We're gonna continue to grow. And we need a leader. Mr. Haslip has presented himself as a leader of our city. Our city is functioning well with his leadership. I have called on the resources of Public Works and all those things. And they work. The police department, they work. They're working. We're not dysfunctioning. So those of us who thinks that our city is dysfunctioning, it works for me. When I call the police and need help, they come. So that's Mr. Haslip's leadership overall. His personal situation that he has right now is just that. It's a personal situation. Does it affect how he operates every day? I'm sure it's at the back of his mind. But in no form or fashion do I think it's gonna affect his decision-making in leading the city of Lewisburg and its employees. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Willa Gentry. I live at 605 Fourth Avenue North.
Yes ma'am, you can go ahead and speak.
I come with the Holy Spirit because I'm so upset. This gentle giant here, he took care of a situation that I came before y'all in 2024. So let me tell you a little bit about what went down. When I was walking and I had fear, because you're supposed to walk on the sidewalk right in front of where you go to vote at, which is Hardeston School, there were at least four or five cars. They had their cars hyped up and they were working on their cars. But I had fear. So what I done is, I went into the office and asked, who do I need to speak about this? Because after all, I'm walking. And I did have fear of walking by the sidewalk. So I went to this gentle giant and he told me that he would look into it. He looked into it, but guess what? Someone in the office had told those guys, you better move all of that stuff. Because when he appeared, it was nothing. So someone had to tell somebody that you need to clean up your mess. Because sometime, we can hide different people. Sometime, it's not what you know, it's who you know. So I come to tell you about his character. So his character is, he's a gentle giant. He is a, he is a godly man. He's a brilliant and smart man. In fact, he's one of the top 10 students in his class of 1982. This man is very brilliant. He's not a perfect man. He's a man that has the right to have a private life. If we look at each one of us, we have all made mistakes and will continue to make mistakes until our Savior Jesus Christ comes to judge all of us. So our job is not to judge. My question is, what does this have to do with his job? After all, this should have been done in a respectful and private manner. I read about President Kennedy. He had a life where he was doing some things, but it did not get rid of his job. So again, I say, this man is beyond brilliant and he should have not, never went to jail. This right here was something that should have been done in a private manner. And you need to think about it because what is God gonna say about all of us? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
My name is Carmelia Haslip McLean. Bam is my brother. And I'm up here because I've known him longer than anybody in this room. And the things they are saying about him, I guess women should be scared if they go outside, think he gonna jump out the bushes on them, but they probably need to be watching for ice. And knowing what we know is fact. And for those so interested in honesty and integrity, if Bam looked like Donald Trump, would we be here or somewhere having parades or dinners in his honor? Is there a double standard in play? And also, I see that the news is here. Why is it always that when it's something negative, the news show up? Ghost music and more, that's supposed to be something positive. Do we see the news here, thinking? And also, when the weather's bad, the little moniker goes over to everybody's county. It could be raining, lightning, thundering in Lewisburg, but they never say Lewisburg on the news, unless it's something negative. And it's sickening. And my address is 731 Creek Street, Lewisburg, Tennessee.
Anyone else?
My name is Tamika Harris. I live at 650 Second Avenue North. And I don't have a prepared statement, but I do want to let you all know that I too am Bam's sister. And we have to live with hearing the things that are being said, which everyone has the right to say what they wanna say. Everyone has the right to have an opinion. I don't wanna step on anybody's freedom of speech rights. But at the end of the day, the standards that we are setting for other people, we have to live up to those same standards ourselves, including me. I'm not exempt. And to piggyback on what my sister said, these are allegations. The public opinion, the court of public opinion has made its decisions. But we have yet to have a trial. We have yet to see evidence. And the people that don't even know the facts, the people that don't even know the assumptions, the people that are so concerned about the victim. If you were so concerned about the victim, then you would know who the alleged victim is. And then you would have the opportunity to determine who is the victim. It could be Bam. So I'm just here to say, and I also would like to say that, thank you, city council, for taking the time to be here tonight. I was at your last council meeting. I felt like you all conducted business the way business is supposed to be conducted. And that's what I would like to see in the future. Again, people's private affairs and things like that, what do they actually have to do with the running of the city? If there is no impact on how the city is being run, the progression, the growth? And that's my question. All of you here, the people who have lived in Lewisburg for a long time, have you seen growth since Bam has been at the helm? Have you seen growth? If you have, then what is the adverse impact here? What is really driving this? I don't wanna be the first person to say that color has something to do with everything, but at the end of the day, does it? Because again, we have a convicted president who is still the leader of the free world. And many of you, probably, I'm willing to bet that 30% of the council members probably voted for it. So I'd just like you to consider those things. Let's not set a double standard here. That's all I'm gonna say.
Anyone else?
My name is Jeff Porch. 188 South View Drive, Lewisburg, Tennessee. I just told the sweet lady behind me, Ms. Gentry, she's been telling me how nice I am all night. I don't want her to get mad at me now. But here's, I'm not trying to say what should be done. Not to, what I want everybody to realize is, what if it was the police chief in this situation? What if it was the fire chief? What if it was the director of the fire department? You asked what, some people asked what it had to do with the running of the city. And I'm up on, I'm a county commissioner and I'm up on rules and stuff. And I'm not saying, me and, me and Roy Bam Haslam have known each other all our life. We got the same birthday, August twelfth, last week. We, we grew up together and we've had some disagreements a time or two. We have, but I still consider him my friend. I'll hug his neck when we leave. He might not want me to, but I'm saying, this, when it's the city of Lewisburg or the county or anybody else, you got rules and regulations. The law states whether you're black, white, pink, or whatever, if you got a victim, whether it's man or woman, accusing you of an order of protection, it's an ex parte order protection was issued. That, when that happens and you got two people working together, whether you believe the accuser or not, the accused has got to be suspended. It didn't happen. Then, and, and the city has got in their charter this stuff, cause I've read it and I've seen it. Now, when the order of protection was extended for a year, saying they had enough evidence to extend that order of protection. I wasn't there, so I can't say. I'm just telling you what, a judge decided that this order of protection was, had enough evidence to be done. When that was done, your city charter, charter would have fired the, the police chief. It didn't happen. Now you got an arrest. I'm sorry if you think the TBI or somebody's got some kind of conspiracy and all that stuff. But when, when you got enough evidence to go present to, to a grand jury and indict you and you're charged, if you're the city manager, you should be fired. Whether you're black, white, pink, or whatever, that's the bottom line. If that was me, I should be fired. Now, I might not would be, but I'll tell you what I, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, but I'll tell you what would happen. Okay, thank you. Did you hit me or the crowd? Mr. Bingham? Was you tapping me or?
No, your time's not up.
Hi, my time?
It is now.
Thank you.
Put this down. My name's Sherri Ferguson, twenty fifty Wild Cherry Court, Lewisburg. I would hate to think that any of this had anything to do with race. I love brothers and sisters of every color. I, I don't care about that, okay? And my concern, and I personally have experienced over several years, two incidents where there was a charge on someone and it went to court, what it, but it was proven, well, the person, they weren't guilty, okay? And things happen, but the family suffers and everybody suffers. But the point is that we don't know until everything is proven and it's gone to court. But everybody in this country is innocent until proven guilty. That's what, that's what we stand on. And I know of two incidents where people very close to me were falsely accused, okay? And things happen. So, but I'm here as a matter of procedure and policy. I'm not here about color. I'm not here about personal problems or an incident in a case. But there should be laws and procedures. Now, I work for the county myself. If I were accused of something, I'm quite sure that I would be asked to go on leave or whatever until there should be a procedure there. Until every, till it's been to court, everything has been decided and it's been all gone through the proper procedures according to our law. I, what is somewhat disturbing to me is the fact that there's nothing in place so that, you know, any one of you could have hard ta, well, or in that, in that position, could have a heart attack and die. Then what happens? Who comes next? It seems to me like there's nothing in place to take care of these situations. And who is appointed? Cause checks have to be written, purchase orders have to be made, stuff has to be signed. So is that just gonna go undone until somebody decides something? So that's what bothers me is about the government and how it works. That's why I'm here, is to, those things need to be straightened, straightened out. And it needs to be clear. There needs to be everything in writing and whatever bylaws or whatever you want to call it. There needs to be a procedure. And it just appears to me that that has not been followed. And so that's what I have to say, but please, please, I, the last thing I would ever hope is this turned into a thing of race amongst my Lewisburg neighbors and my friends and people I love. Thank you.
Okay, who else?
My name is Bradford Pippen. Uh, my address is two five two Hopkins Avenue, Lewisburg, Tennessee. I'm not here to get up on a soapbox. I'm not here to make this about race. I mainly just have a question for the council. Uh, will the executive meeting minutes be produced to the public so we can understand the nature of the discussions in that meeting?
Mr. Hutto?
So the purpose of the executive session was not to make any decisions, deliberations. What was discussed down there was me really leading the discussion, providing a legal opinion of what are the potential options the city council could take? What is the nature of these specific charges? Their severity, what has to be proven? What is reasonable or what is probable cause versus beyond a reasonable doubt? And then also what, you know, what could happen with the city? Depending on the actions they take, yeah, is there, where's, where's the city's liability? Depending on any of the choices that the council might make. So those are all essentially legal opinions that are between, I guess, me and the city council to help them then come in here, listen to everyone and all of you, and then talk and debate the issue further before they make a final or make any decision.
Will the public be aware, uh, be made aware of what options are available to the council in decision making?
What? The minutes of the executive meeting?
No, I'm asking whether or not the options that are available to the council in making a decision, will they be made available to the public so that we can give comment on what those decisions would be? Or are they written into the bylaws of the charter of the city?
I don't believe I understand your questions, but what would happen after the comment period?
My question is fundamentally, will the public be made aware of the potential consequences of this meeting? And what options are available to them?
So at some point tonight, the city council, somebody will make a motion on what to do. And it may be any of the options that I suggest to them, or it might be some other option that they, I come up with on their own. And if another city council member seconds that motion, then they'll vote on it or discuss it and then vote on it. You know, the charter is kind of sparse on this topic or when, you know, where if someone's personal life interferes as part of their professional one. But we've, you know, I think I've hopefully fully informed them about this issue and given them enough information so that they can talk about it further in public and make a good decision about it.
I think I'm still unclear of what options are available to the council.
Right, I'll be.
Just hang around, you'll find out here in just a few minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, who else? Anybody else? See anybody?
Uh, good evening, my name is Frida Johnson. I live at ten fifty-nine Cochran Cemetery Road, Lewisburg. To caveat off what the young man was asking, uh, and I think he was specifically asking you as, uh, Mr. Bingham, as the city mayor, what, will the public be aware of what your options are? And you're saying, well, hang around. Well, I think what he really wants to know, before you vote on it, will you let the public know what the options are? Of whether you're gonna suspend him, fire him, or whatever the options will be. I don't have a dog in the fight, other than I am a property owner in Lewisburg, just like probably most of the people in here. We would really like to know when you make your decision, and hopefully it won't be a rash decision and hopefully it won't be tonight, because it will be not really taken in consideration what we're saying to you. Uh, I'm not trying to play on your emotions or anybody's emotions, but rules have to be followed, understand that. Don't know if anything nefarious is going on with race? Have no idea. I don't know what the charges really are. It's not my business right now, but as a citizen, it should be. If you're gonna suspend, fire, or whatever the city manager, you gave the people opportunity, now listen to what we're saying and take into consideration of the man's job, what he's done, and also the victim as well, or the alleged victim. So please take that in consideration and look at the whole picture, not just part of the picture. I'm hoping I got your attention, cause you don't seem like you're looking at me. But I'm hoping I have your attention in particular, Mr. Bingham. So I just want you to understand that we are listening. We hear you. We hope you're hearing us as well. That's it.
My name is David McConnell and I'm the pastor of the Lewisburg, of the Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church at forty-eleven Nashville Highway. And Pastor Haslam is my associate now. And just, my thing is that you're assassinating his character. And I, that's not the man I know. The man I know is a loving man who compassionately watched his wife, who was sick for years. He loved her, he went up and down the highway. He's the type of man who helps people. And when you put yourself out to help people, you can be easily misused. We've all been there. We've all taken the risk of helping somebody. And sometime when you help people, they have the mentality of a snake. Some folks will use your kindness against you. And so the man I know is the man who went up and down the highway, who loved his wife, who, who loved her, who cared for her through her sickness, through several years, through her recovery. He's the man who lost his wife and kept his integrity. Showed up, taught his Bible class every week, loved the people in front of him. This is not the man who would hurt or harm a neighbor. This is the man who brought the neighbor's kid to church, who loved the neighbor's kid, who helped the neighbor. This is the man who went out of his way to help a person, not to harm a person. And now he's been called, his job is being called into question because he helped someone. This is just wrong. It's wrong and you would not appreciate it if it happened to you. And so whatever you sow, you gonna reap. May not be here, maybe later. But the way he's being treated today is disgraceful. His job shouldn't be in question. You all should be supporting him. Because you're all our team. And you're not, you should be working against each other. And this sends a bad message to the city as a whole. Thank you, council, for your time. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Will stay as long as necessary. Anyone? Okay, Mr. Hutto, will you help us with the? Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to speak to the crowd, to the council, to the folks out there.
Now, is that better? I appreciate everybody coming out, regardless of what your opinion is. Because I'm a fair man. That's the way I've tried to run this city, with fairness. You can like me or not like me. I would like for you to like me. But if you don't like me and we don't see eye to eye, we can still have a conversation heart to heart. I've always said my office door was open for anybody and it's been open for anybody. What I've discovered in this climate, and I hate it because that's not who we are, I have more people that rather talk about me than talk to me. And I may not be the only person that feels that way, but it's the truth of the matter. We are a city that's on the rise. We're on the move. We're growing. It's obvious, you can see it. And I don't want to just take credit for it, but it's happened under my watch. And I give credit to all the employees of the city of Lewisburg, department heads and even the council for approving some of the things that come before us. We're on the move, we're growing. And our manpower is less than it was many, many years ago. So we're doing more with less. And the one thing I've always tried to be is fair. That fairness does not depend on your race, your creed, your color, your sex, ethnicity, what political affiliation you have, what spiritual affiliation you have. Everybody is somebody. We're all people, we're all citizens of Lewisburg. And when you speak of the city of Lewisburg, it's not just us around this table. It's not just the departments out there and the departments here. It's all of us collective, all the boards we have, the council, it's everybody. And it takes everybody working together for what's in the best interest of everybody for it to work. And in that situation, everybody's not going to always like every decision. Just won't be that way. But we've got to put ourself aside and think about what's best for the city of Lewisburg. So I'm not looking for accolades, pats on the backs, anything. But, 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 but I remember, and I didn't see this in tabloids, on social media, whatever, we went for a period with no planning and codes director, no economic development director. But you know who stepped up and tried to fill those roles? I did. And a lot of, I didn't ask for any more money. I didn't make up excuses for not doing this or not doing that. Sun up to sundown, I was here doing it because this is my city, where I was born, raised and going to die. Already got my headstone, Beechwood Cemetery in Coombesville, Tennessee. I'm doing what I do because I care about this city. And not to knock any other administrations or whatever, but when I inherited this position, I've seen a whole lot of things that were not clear. There was a lot of things hanging that weren't being done the way they probably should have been done or whatever. So my goal was to take what we could clean up from the past and clean it up according to that book that's right there in front of Mr. Hutto. That is our charter. And, and, and I would dare to say that everything we've done in this situation of mine has been according to what that charter says, because that's who he is as an attorney. But that's been my go-to guy. Everything I've done, every decision I've made has been based upon what that book says. And it stays the same. It doesn't matter if you go to work in an Armani suit or you wear overalls and combat boots. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat, Republican, liberal, or conservative. And I think that's where we're trying to go. We're taking our little humble community that's on the rise We're taking our little humble community that's on the rise, and people are striving to work together in unity. We're being attacked by that political monster that's running rampant across this nation, and attacking democracy, and we're trying to bring it here. We're taking one situation and tying it into elections next year in August. We're not promised to be here throughout the remainder of the night. We've got to do what we can do to keep this city moving forward right now, in this moment. And that's all we've tried to do with this city. And we've got allegations, I don't like it, I don't appreciate it, but that's what they are. You know what I'm guilty of? I'm guilty of fornication. And if we would all look in the mirror and tell ourselves what we're guilty of, and we paid attention to fixing that, and working with God to fix our fault, social media would be blank for a while, because we all fall short. But until you, until you accept it, and deal with it, then you get nowhere. But we got this thing that if I sling mud at you, it'll wash my dirt away. It won't work, you'll end up with a dirty city, a dirty world. That's where we are. So, that's what I want to tell you. I've probably had a handful of jobs in my life, but every one of them, I've done my job. Fairly, not mistreated anybody, went by the book, no matter who you were. Could have been my classmate, or you could have been somebody I've never seen before. That's the way I've tried to run this city. And I've tried to instill that mentality in all employees, departments, directors, even council members. People on boards, or whatever, this is the city of Lewisburg. We're better than what some of the comments and the social media statements and all that say. I believe in us, we're better than what we're showing. And I wish that every council meeting or work session we had would look like this. I don't want us to be a city that only comes together in the midst of controversy, and then we feed off of it. We're not a world that tramples on somebody when they're down, or we just, we gloat in it. That's not who we are, that's not our character, that's not, that's why folks are moving here. That's why these homes are being built. Somebody's coming here because they like the nature and character of what we show here. We've got entities and organizations that do everything in the world to bring the community together, unified, in the name of the Lord, and we get turnouts. Anytime Hope Town is doing something, or one of these other organizations is doing something, people come and support it. That's who we are. And there are people of every color, every race, every creed, every social economic status, they're there, in unity as one. That's the way this city is going to progress and go forward. It's 2025, we've got to put away the standards and regulations of 1825.
Mr. Hutto, what would you suggest next, a motion to be made? I think we talked about several motions, potential motions.
I think it's up to any individual council member that wants to make a motion as to, you know, take action or not take action, or... Someone could make a motion to adjourn, if they wanted to as well, and not take any action. There's the options we discussed downstairs, and I mean, I'm happy to list them again if you would like, and then someone can make a motion, or someone can simply make one.
Having said that, do we have a motion in regards to the employment of Roy Bam Hazlum? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion concerning the employment status of Roy Bam Hazlum? Mr. Hutto, since there's no motion been made, does that conclude our business?
As soon as someone makes a motion to adjourn, Mayor.
I make a motion.
Who made the motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Councilman Crutcher makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Robertson makes the second, is there discussion? All in favor, say aye. This is for adjournment. It's a voice vote, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Everybody an aye?
This is for adjournment of the meeting, either say aye or nay, to adjourn, that's what the...
I'm getting confused.
Let's say it again, all in favor of the motion, say aye, verbally. Councilman? No?
No.
No.
Motion fails.
Mr. Hutto, Mr. Hutto, do you want me to read item three?
Oh, we can.
Can I do that?
I mean, I think we're in, I have a favor, but, you know.
Okay, excuse me.
Go ahead, we're gonna read item three.
What's item three?
Item three.
Go ahead.
You don't want, you don't want most of the other one?
Motion adjournment fail.
I know that, but we're going back up.
We're going to three.
What is three?
Okay, fine.
Item three, discuss facts presented in executive session.
Okay, anyone wish to discuss those facts, or that discussion?
Yeah, okay. I guess the options you gave us, I'll be the one to get the worst one over first, so we can move on to other things, okay? I make a motion to terminate Bam. Y'all listen, y'all listen. We're getting the worst over with, it may die for lack of a second, may not be voted on, we get the worst one over first.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
No.
Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
No.
Motion fail.
Okay, what other motion is there available, Mr. Hutto?
Well, a council member could make a motion to do nothing, or to not address this further tonight, which I guess is our motion to adjourn, which failed. We could make a motion to investigate further the nature of the criminal charges, and see if there's any actual impact on Mr. Hazlum's employment activities. As we discussed as an option downstairs, we could have a motion for a suspension as city manager for a limited period of time, either while that investigation occurs, or simply as a reaction to having charges being made, and...
Do I have a motion for any of those options? Motion for any of those options?
I'll make a motion to do nothing.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
So, Councilman Robertson makes the motion, Councilman Crutcher seconds the motion, is that correct? Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher. Councilman Barnes.
No.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
No.
Councilman Michael.
No.
Is there anybody else willing to make any other kind of motion to, concerning the employment status of Mr. Hazlum? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, we'll try it again.
Motion to...
Adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Do I have any other motion? Mr. Hutto, I'm at a loss to what to do.
Well?
Do we just sit here?
Hope not.
Any suggestions?
The options that have not been voted on, or had a motion for after being called, are to have a, the city investigate it, the issue, as is allowed under its personnel policies, or, and/or a motion for administrative suspension for a length of time, either with or without pay, are the remaining, I think, options out there.
Do I have any motion in that regard?
Okay, I'll try it again. Get this one off the table, right? Make a motion to suspend the city manager nine days, ninety days without pay.
Ninety days, you're saying?
Thank you.
Please, no audience participation. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Motion dies for a lack of a second.
I'd like to make a motion for one month, one month with pay, and so we could do the investigation. Then after the investigation, we just take it from there.
State that motion again, please.
Make a, I make a motion for one month with pay.
One month, what?
One month, suspension with pay.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Well, is that your whole month?
Well, one month suspension with pay, pending on the investigation.
And that will require an additional motion if this passes, correct, Mr. Hutto?
I think if this one passes to have an investigation and the suspension, then there'd just be, need to be a motion to hire outside counsel to perform that investigation.
And that would be a separate?
That one would be a separate motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman. Michael seconds the motion. Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on this motion. I agree with the investigation, I think we ought to perform an outside investigation, but I do think that the suspensions should be without pay, to use those funds to pay for the outside investigation.
Any other discussion?
Okay, so hang on, that's another...
No, it was just my comment, we can vote, that was my comment on his motion, we can vote on it.
Call the roll, please.
We didn't have a discussion, did we?
Yes, I asked for, she was discussing.
Yeah, but you seconded it, right?
No.
Okay.
That was my discussion.
Okay, who seconded it?
So, I got Crutcher on first with the motion.
I seconded it.
You seconded it, yeah, okay.
And then I made a comment.
Okay, then, yeah, I like to discuss it. Let Mr. Hutto, let the council and the body know, if we do hire somebody outside, the, how it's performed and things like that. Now, he made a motion with pay, you made a motion without pay.
No, my comment was, I thought it should be without pay, so we can use those funds to pay for the outside investigation.
So, if that motion fails, it could be added.
Okay, okay.
That could be added.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher. Councilman Barnes.
No.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
No.
Councilman Michael.
No.
All right, I gotta get some paper, hang on just a second.
We ran out of paper.
Yeah, just hang on.
Let's, we're still conducting business, we're still conducting business.
Okay, ready for another?
I'll make the next motion that says that...
May I change here?
Okay, be quiet, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we conduct, or we hire a legal firm to conduct an outside investigation, unbiased investigation, and giving them one month to conclude their investigation and bring us their results. In the meantime, the city manager should be suspended without pay for that month.
Suspended without pay, yes ma'am.
Yes. Councilwoman Michael makes his motion, is there a second?
I second.
There's a second to that motion. Mr. Crutcher, correct?
Yes.
Further discussion, or discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
No.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody got this? Anybody got this? Anybody know who the Tigers are, how they're doing in Lincoln County? It ain't almost over yet.
I just wanna know who's on first.
Now, as a result of that, no? What, you, read the motion again that passed.
Okay, motion that we hire a, a legal law firm outside for an investigation, and the city manager is one month with suspended without pay, correct?
Okay, now, Mr. Hutto.
I want the motion to use those funds for, to pay for the...
You want me to add the funds?
No, that would have to, you'd have to amend the motion to do that.
Oh, that's the motion you made.
Well, the motion's already passed. That was in her motion.
That's it.
Read it back again.
Motion that we hire a legal firm outside for investigation. Conclude an investigation with the city manager suspended without pay with funding of investigation, right?
Partially fund, 'cause it may cost, well, use those funds toward the investigation.
State that one more time into your mic.
Yes, to use those funds.
To use those funds.
Toward the independent investigation.
That's a little different from the motion that was... Wasn't that a little different?
It is, well, no, it's actually the same. In my mind, it's the same, but because we don't know who the outside legal firm is, and we don't know what that fee will be, we cannot cap it with one month's worth of salary at this time.
No, I didn't, I didn't understand that the motion included that in the original motion, to use that money. Am I correct?
She did state to fund it.
But it should be help fund.
Okay.
The suspension without pay would help fund the investigation.
Okay, all right, now, Mr. Hutto, for that period of time, we need some, a purchasing agent. Is tonight the appropriate time to do that, or do we have to call a special meeting for that?
No, there would need to be a, 'cause that's not on, necessarily on the agenda, or close enough on the agenda. I think you'd need a special call meeting Monday to appoint someone to be the interim city manager during that time.
During the one-month period.
During that suspension period. And it, and given the lack of clarity in the motion, it might be best to, I don't know, rescind it and then restate it completely, so that there's no confusion down the road.
So hard to rescind.
When, there'd have to be a motion and a second and a vote on it, and then you could make the motion again, fully stated, that has all the...
Okay, do we have a motion to?
Let me ask something, though. So my suspension starts Monday, even though you hadn't already hired an outside entity to do it?
That was gonna be my next question for Mr. Hutto.
What if it takes two weeks to three weeks?
Well, that, uh...
I don't think we're gonna hire anybody by Monday.
That would be hard to hire someone by Monday.
I wanna know what I need to do. I don't wanna miss work.
We can...
I mean, if I'm supposed to be here, I'm playing here.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Just a minute. We, if I, we understood in the meeting that we could designate an existing employee to be the purchasing agent.
Right.
In, in, you know, an existing lawyer.
Yeah, for the month.
Yes.
Would it have to be a temporary city manager purchasing agent in all of the...
I don't think that's what discussion...
No, I think...
Alan can do it.
You wouldn't need the ci...
You wouldn't need the city manager for a month, just a temporary purchasing agent.
Because then I would need a...
And wait till the outside investigation brings up results.
No, the charter says that the city manager is not available or is disabled, temporarily, temporarily unavailable or disabled, they have to, there has to be an interim city manager. And it'd be the same if Mr. Hazelip was gonna be in the hospital for a month, I think.
So it has to be an interim city manager, or just the purchasing agent?
Says when he's temporarily absent or disabled, the city council may appoint a suitable and qualified person to perform the duties of the city manager during his temporary absence or disability. And, you know, the, other than managing all the departments, the, the city manager signs all our checks, signs the purchasing orders, signs several other things, manages the employees, so I, I think, you know, it's a, that is an excellent question. If we can't hire somebody as a law firm next Monday, which is, would be hard since today's Friday, or two weeks, you know, it might take a week, two weeks, when, you know, when does his suspension start? And if it, if he's gonna come back in the middle of the investigation, it's another good, you know, then, what happens then? So, you know, maybe, maybe, we should have a motion to strike that first motion, have a little bit more discussion about the logistics, if you want to suspend Mr. Hazelip while this investigation goes on, 'cause it, and when that would start, whether it starts once somebody's hired, or whether it starts immediately, and that there's just gonna be overlap at the end of it, and whether a month is appropriate.
We, we've already voted to suspend him, but why can't we have a investigation with him still here? I mean, why's he gotta be suspended?
He doesn't. I mean, that, that is just something that's up to y'all, that you can, you can have the investigation while he's here, you could, you could suspend him.
I mean, we've already voted to suspend him, I mean, that could be changed, I guess, but why does he have to be suspended for the, to do, to do the investigation?
I was just thinking of, of city funds and not spending more money necessarily.
But we gonna turn around and hire, we gonna hire, hire anyone, so we still won't...
But I wasn't aware of that. I thought we could just get the purchasing agent from...
That's what, that's what I thought we discussed downstairs.
Yes, that's what I thought we discussed downstairs as well.
It can be the same as a person agent.
It can be.
It can, can be that a person already within the bill.
If you're gonna turn around and pay somebody else, why not pay him?
You already, if you hire somebody already here...
In the bill and they're already making money, yeah.
See, I was talking about hiring somebody outside.
No, well, they was at first, but no, not now.
Because of the short period of it, we wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going outside just because of the short period of the, the one month, pending the results.
Go outside for a city manager.
Correct. Not at this time, not, not for the, the short term of it.
So that's the least costly?
That's the least costly in my mind, that's the least costly in my mind, and it protects the city funds.
Okay, Mr. Hutto, do we need to rescind the motion that passed and clarify?
I, I would recommend it, because it, what Mr. Hazelip pointed out, does, you know, what happens if we can't hire a law firm to handle this within a month, or within two weeks, or within one week? When does his suspension start? And should, and if, if he's gonna be here, if his suspension ends and the investigation's still going on, was the suspension, suspension, I guess, necessary, or was it not? And what's its purpose? So I would say if Ms. Michaels will make a motion to rescind her motion and have someone second it, we can try again.
Okay, hang on. Go ahead.
Make a motion to...
I would like to rescind the previous motion.
Shh. Do you have a second?
Not second.
Please. Councilwoman Michael, is there a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
Was that Shannon?
Yes.
Shannon Crutcher, seconded that motion. Discussion.
Hang on, I, I'm having to write all this.
Having writer's cramp?
Yes. Okay, I'm ready.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
The motion is to rescind the previous motion.
Rescind.
Rescind. Rescind, sorry, rescind.
Further discussion?
No.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Councilwoman Michael, would you like to make a new motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to hire an outside law firm to make an unbiased internal investigation.
Outside law firm to make unbiased, okay, investigation.
Mm-hmm. Tor, concerning allegations against the city manager.
Concerning allegations against the city manager. Okay.
In the timeframe of one month. And during that month.
And during that month, okay.
Suspend the city manager without pay pending the results.
Mr. Hutto, do you think that's good and accurate and proper motion?
I, I think that'll be logistically... Logistically difficult, just to, you could have, I, I would think I would, if I were to word what I think Councilman Michael is saying, is that the one month to hire an outside law firm to make an unbiased investigation to be completed, you know, within one month of their hired, hired date, and that Mr. Hazelip be suspended for one month, starting the date that law firm is hired, I think, is what we're, what Ms. Michael is trying to say.
Okay.
All right.
That's a little different, then.
Okay, it is different.
Is that clear? Let's read it again, so everybody understands.
Okay, read it to the point.
Motion to hire an outside law firm to make a unbiased, conduct a unbiased investigation concerning the allegations against the city manager, in the timeframe of one month during the month the city manager, during the month suspended, city manager without pay. That was your motion?
The month should be once.
When they was hired.
The month, what? The month should be when the investigation is occurring, beginning when the law firm is hired?
Beginning when the law firm is hired.
For one month.
So he will be city manager until that law firm is hired.
Beginning with one month? What did you say, beginning with one month?
No, the law firm should have a month.
Yeah.
Okay. Once they start investigating, and, or, once they're hired, then Mr. Hazelip would go on suspension during that month without pay.
It may take, it may takes a week or two to hire someone, is what that's basically saying. Is that clear to you, Mr. Hutto?
Uh, yes, that would cause the suspension to begin once a law firm was hired.
Okay.
Okay.
So we understand, we understand that. So, the, did we second that new motion? We need a second to the motion. The revised motion.
The one you just read?
Yes, will you please read it again?
Okay, so, 'cause I really need to go back and listen to the part, okay, so motion to hire an outside law firm to make an unbiased investigation on the allegations against the city manager, in the timeframe of...
Within that month.
Within that month, okay? Within that month, suspend the city manager without pay on the beginning of the investigation.
No, after we hire the man, then it's thirty days.
Scratch it, scratch it, scratch it, start all over.
This is what I think she's saying. Can I, can I, can I try to...
Mr. Hutto could say it, how's that? Mr. Hutto.
Will you say it, Mr. Hutto?
Sure, I believe the motion is to hire an outside law firm to make an unbiased investigation into the allegations against the city manager. The city manager will be suspended without pay for one month, starting the date that law firm is hired.
Okay, you give me that, because you read it too fast. You read it, read it way too fast.
Say it, say it slowly, so she can write it down.
Sure, it's a, it's a motion to hire an outside law firm.
Eight, six, four, clock.
Uh, to make an unbiased investigation.
Unbiased investigation.
Into the allegations against the city manager.
Into the allegations against the city manager.
Uh, the city manager will be suspended with, for one, for thirty days without pay.
Okay, hang on, the city manager, manager will be suspended thirty days without pay.
Uh, as of the date that law firm is hired.
I think that's what we decided, is that, is everybody satisfied with that?
Suspended without pay when the law firm starts the investigation.
As, as of the date they're hired.
As of, as of the date they're hired, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hutto.
Is that your motion?
No.
Yeah.
We all took it together after Lady MacDillan...
I got it on record, I got it, I got it on record.
So she can read it and everybody...
I got it on record, uh, recording.
Now.
Okay.
Let her read the motion.
We gonna read it one more, huh?
Okay. Motion to hire an outside law firm to make an unbiased investigation into the allegation against the city manager with suspension without, without pay for thirty days, as of the date they are hired, correct?
Yes.
The firm is hired.
Yes, the firm, okay. Is that correct?
Is that crystal clear?
Is that correct?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
Please, no talking. Silence, please.
Okay, so you're...
I made the motion.
And who's seconded?
Is this your motion?
Yes.
I seconded.
Seconded, okay.
Made by Vicki, seconded by Shannon, correct?
Right.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Barnes.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
No.
Councilman Thomas.
No.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Nothing, no other motion is required as a result of that, and so Mr. Hazelip is still gonna be the purchasing agent until that hiring.
He'll be city manager until that time, and thus, the purchase manager. So on Monday, the posting or the requisition for an outside law firm will need to begin.
Okay, Mr. Hutto, will you help me with that?
I will search for that and get it.
Okay.
Take, posted or advertised, or solicit, maybe solicit, solicited to certain law firms that deal with this.
Okay, that would be great.
Now, when this does happen, then... When this does happen, then how are we gonna handle the purchasing agent going forward during this process?
We need a special call when he goes in.
Assuming, you know, we find and hire a law firm that's willing to do this, there'd either need to be a special call meeting, if we weren't about to have a regular meeting, to appoint someone to be the interim city manager for that month.
Do we need a special call to hire the law firm? Or is that just a regular purchase order through business?
Well, that's a contract, I... Well, it's a contract, I, um.
Professional services.
Professional services.
Is that not a resolution that you need to agree to?
That's.
That has to be a separate call meeting, correct?
That would probably need to be a separate call meeting to have, uh, to hire whatever firm that is.
And could we, so when that meeting occurs, could we appoint the interim at that time and do the same things in the same meeting?
You ought to be able to.
Yep, okay.
I ought to, or we can.
Well, if it's on the agenda, they.
We can, yeah.
We can do the interim.
Do both if there's, uh.
Right.
You can say, we're gonna hire them, hire them as of this date, and, uh, then have a motion to appoint someone.
Oh, we're hiring, we're appointing somebody already here.
For one month, I'd like to appoint somebody here, that was the whole point of the cost savings.
Right, okay.
In the building, it's already.
Yes.
But that would have to take a spe- an extra meeting, special call should be included.
They were saying the special call could handle the voting of hiring the law firm and plus, uh, discussing an interim and voting.
In the same meeting.
In the same building.
Exactly, not in tonight's meeting.
No, no, no.
No, another call, special call.
I shaved today, but I think I need to shave again.
Maybe so, I agree with you, so Hutto, when we, when we engage the law firm, the purchasing agent, the date of engagement, right?
Yes.
Same date of suspension, you did all done in one meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Again, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'm gonna go.
Robertson makes a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Councilman Crutcher seconds that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We stand adjourned.